Alright, it's nine thirty-three, we will begin this special meeting. Lake County Board of County Commissioners. Welcome everyone, thanks for coming in. On the agenda today. We have. The discussion of the master development plan for Ski Cooper. Thanks, good looking out. Hefty list. Okay, so we've got. Pretty minor. Changes we wanna discuss today. The overall. Uh, body of the MDP. I think. We all agree is pretty good. As. The. Voice for a lot of people who don't get to have a voice in this discussion. The. Moving up with the timeline for. Ski school enhancements, I think was something that we've heard. Enough of, so we'd like to. Discuss moving that up a phase. And the. Discussions we've had with various. Local partners regarding the port of entry leaves room for some concern. The Forest Service and the folks who. Are not particularly thrilled with how it all is set up. Um, seem to be at odds with what I hear from most of the people in this room. Um, and other proponents. So that's something we wanna discuss is whether. It really makes sense to continue putting that in there and trying to fight against. A federal entity and continue to ignore the people, the locals especially. Who aren't really too thrilled with how that's set up.
Yeah, I agree, those are the two main changes I would wanna make as well.
So my position personally. Sitting in this chair is I don't think it's. Makes a lot of sense to continue battling a federal agency over the port of entry. I don't think it's good for Ski Cooper. I think I've sat in enough meetings and listened to the struggles that have happened over. Not backing down off of that and just deciding that. It doesn't matter what anyone else says, it needs, it needs to happen. I've listened to public meetings where. Board members have said on record they've never heard anything bad and nothing negative. Um, they only hear good things, which. Leads me to believe that maybe there's some disconnect with how some of the board members are hearing things, not all, I don't. Paint all you guys with one brush. So. Me personally, I think it's, I think it's a problem to continue to put Ski Cooper through legal trouble, battles and more unnecessary fights to. Think about including that port of entry in future plans. It adds a barrier of access to public land. I think that's the position. That the federal, the US Forest Service is taking.
Yeah, I also don't think it's friendly. It's not friendly. Port of entry. So the perception of what it is, even if it's not the intention, is not something I would wanna see continue. Candace, can you? Yeah. Well stated, Andy.
So the question is, can we move forward with those two changes? Well, I mean, on a tight deadline.
We can get it done.
Yeah, we absolutely cannot talk to the Forest Service about us meeting our deadlines and our responsibilities. We'll have no issues with. Meeting our responsibilities on our end. Um, unless we were gonna try to overhaul the whole thing, which we're not doing, you know, there's just. Some issues that we see that. You know, there's plenty of people, no immigrant disagree with us. But, you know, this group right here represents an important voice, but not the only voice. And, you know, you can shake your head all you want, but it's, it's just the reality where we're at today. Um, so yeah, we'll have no problems getting it in on time. Go ahead, Dan, yeah?
Regarding the uh, ski school facility. There is not an issue at all. The presentation that we made at CMC on May eighth. Included moving that to. Because the board, we discussed this and said, you know, that's probably a hot button item and quite frankly, you know, in the big scheme of things. Um, you know, these phases are. Ideas, you know, this is not a concrete prescription for what's going to happen, you know, from the ninety-nine MDP. We've probably completed, I don't know, thirty, thirty-five percent of the projects, not necessarily in order. But we recognize that, you know, the ski school. Uh, facility is a pretty important hot button topic for us right now. So I think what happened was. We uh, we changed it in the presentation, the MDP presentation, it did not get included in the actual MDP. And not nobody that I know of and folks else picked up, that's any problem, know what, knew that about.
Great.
That's just fine.
Did you already edit the MDP document though, and we didn't get that edited one, or should we just edit it on our side?
You know what, when I get back to my office and I can, we've been down the internet and network for two days now. I can't get into the files, but I'll let you know, and if you guys need to edit it. I don't think that's a problem at all.
Okay, thanks.
You know, we, as again, we recognize what's going on there. You know, regarding the port of entry. Yeah, there's, there are mixed ways to look at this thing, to be quite frank. And I think there's a lot of, a lot of things that, a lot of thought that went into, uh, you know, producing that situation. That not everybody's aware of, and I'm not here to, to make a big fight about this, you guys are gonna. You know, take it out, that's fine, we can do whatever we have to do. Uh, so no, no squabble there. But, you know, that is kind of, it's more than just a gate going up and down, making people, making people feel uncomfortable, which I'm not quite sure I'm. I'm on board with that, you know, we have a lot of people coming through there, I spend a lot of time out there. And not everybody doesn't like it, as a matter of fact, a lot of people love it because once they're in the gate, they're done, they don't have to get scanned to know there aren't the issues. The other thing is, you know, it is a guest service touch point, if you didn't experience that, I'm sorry, this has been an evolution for five years now. And that's how long we've had the thing there. It also provides a checkpoint for people coming in. To make sure that their pass is valid. If they're going to go to the rental shop to make sure they actually have a pass. It is loaded with everything it needs to be loaded with, that creates a pinch point. At the rental shop for people coming in there, the same thing with ski school. You know, I could go on and on, um, you know, uh, same thing, if you, if you walk in, you know, open free, which you want to do. Uh, but if you get to the bottom of the double and for whatever reason your access pass is not validated. You're gonna end up taking everything back off and walking back down again. Whereas right now, you just walk three steps around the corner and just take care of the guest services, so. I'm not, you know, I'm not here, this is not a bill any of us wanna die of. We can, we can adjust, we're pretty flexible in our end, okay? We can adjust and do things to get through this, but. Quite frankly, you know, we, we, when we did this MDP the last round. It may have been misstated, you know, what we would like to do is have it in there as an option, just like everything else in there is an option. This MDP does not give us permission or you guys permission to do anything. It's gotta go through the Forest Service. And I get mixed signals from various levels of people in the Forest Service about this whole thing. You know, this seemed to be a very localized situation. And I was told the reason that we shouldn't have it there is because nobody else does it. That's not a great reason in my opinion, um, maybe we all think it is, but that's kind of weird to me. So we wanted to leave it in there as an option for the future. And as far as, you know, fighting the Forest Service, if they say no, guess what, it's done, it's over. It's not a big deal, so, and it's any harm in having it in there, just like a few other things that I might not agree with leaving in there. But, so that's kind of, you know, where we stand on that. And as far as, you know, the concern of it not being there. I'm a big boy, I've been doing this for a lot longer than those people in this room have, we can make it work, that's not a problem. So, again, I don't want that to be something that's gonna hold this process up. There's always room, as we put in for a few other items in there, there's always room for amendment later if everybody gets on the same page. And that could happen, or it might not happen. That's kind of, that's where I stand on this whole thing, it wasn't, you know, something an in-your-face thing, and if you have been out there lately. Uh, for about the last three weeks, maybe four weeks, that whole facility is gone.
Yeah.
Port of entry is gone, the gates are gone, everything is gone. The Forest Service has been there and inspected everything and given, given us the last thing, knowing the cure and all the things that they had to do to comply, so. I think we've done our, our part here and, uh, you know, if we were gonna, like, I think everybody thought we were just gonna leave the thing in place and go from there. That was not the real intent of this whole thing, so. Anyways, that's all I got on that stuff, I don't think we should have a problem getting this thing through.
Great.
Can I just get your name, please?
Joe Smith.
Joe Smith?
No, no, no.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Uh, that was another concern, uh, very real, um, that I've. Got credible. Um, reasons to worry about turning it in with that in there and having it be rejected. So that's another motivator for me to think it might be a good idea to pull that out.
Yeah, I mean, you can look at it that way, and you're, you know, the Forest Service, if they're doing their job, they're gonna take a look at this thing, you know, with the plans to build. And uh, there may be other things in there that they do, you know, agree with. It's, you know, just because you guys hand it to them doesn't mean it's accepted by them.
Sure.
It means they gotta get through a process that could be pretty lengthy, and we could be having more discussions as we go on.
Yeah.
So, but, you know, for, you know, getting the thing in, whether it's in there or not, I guess. Your call is, after all, the county's at the.
Great, thanks for that, Dan. Anyone else in the room have anything they wanna chime in on this subject? Yes, go ahead and state your name.
I'm Mike Matheson, uh, one twenty-six West Seventh Street, today I'm here, I'm the founder of the adaptive program at Ski Cooper. We operate under followthefaststeps.org. We're disheartened uh, with the removal of the port of entry. Uh, because it provides a lot easier access for our people that are in uh, mobile device aids. And individuals that are arriving to do adaptive lessons. We have trained people that are stand at the port of entry that can assist them to come in and enter the base area. And then begin operations about ski, ski lessons and their riding lessons. So, we're gonna, we're an adaptive room, so whatever you guys do, uh, we will create a whole new adaptive process. To aid these individuals so they can come out and ski or ride out there, but the port of entry. Uh, I work at Steamboat, I work at Copper, I work at Loveland, provides a, a really unique opportunity for people that are skiing. Uh, with disabilities to easily access of the base areas. And get additional help, to get all their equipment and that to the lifts. So, and I know a hu- I'm, I'm a hundred percent sure that we weren't represented in any of the conversations, cause no one reached out to us. Uh, about the port of entry and how successful it's been for us in helping people that ski with disabilities or ride with disabilities. So we're just a little disheartened that it's being removed, um, we'll, we'll come up with a different process, but if you could leave it in there for the future. Or different ways for us to access the mountains, um, that'd be great for us to work with Forest Service.
How did it, how did it enhance access?
Yeah, you paint that picture for us a little bit.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So, um, if you have a mono ski or a bi ski, or we're using uh, some type of piece of equipment. There's trained people, the guest service people, all understand how to move that equipment. And can go down and meet the car or meet the transportation bus and help bring that equipment up. There's not gonna be very many guest service people out there anymore, um, to help us do that. They're also trained in helping our, our children that live with autism or live with Down syndrome. They bring a lot of gear with them, helps them bring that gear in, helps them get directed. Many people don't know, Ski Cooper blesses me with the opportunity to open the rental shop early. So that if you have somebody that lives with autism and has a stimming issue or something like that. We can escort them in quite wide. The rental center isn't busy. And that's where the port of entry comes in handy, we have people standing out there waiting to help them, move them through that process. We don't brag about our business, we don't photograph it, it just exists for us. And that's the port of entry really does help us in that aspect, it's a very unique. It's very unique to have it. Uh, at big resorts, at Steamboat, they built us a quiet area. Um, it used to be the old ski patrol headquarters at one Steamboat place, that lets us move people through. But at Ski Cooper, we don't have that, but this port of entry did, did provide that for us, and it's something very neat and. We're sat there just going away, we'll come up with a different process.
Sorry, can I just ask a clarifying question then, was it the port of entry? Or was it actually that there were people there who were available?
It's both. Port of entry, you scan your ticket one time.
Yeah.
So when you have all your equipment, if it's, if you're on a mono ski, you never have to pull your ticket out again.
Yeah.
And for a person that's in a mono ski or somebody living with autism or with Down syndrome. It just removes one more barrier that they have to manage during the whole day. Uh, cause when, now, when we pull up to a lift, we'll pull out all their, we'll find their lift ticket.
I thought we were using RF before the port of entry.
Yeah.
Yeah, the backside does also work, so we're, this is one of those issues, but we're gonna go back, we're gonna take a step backwards. Which is, which is in adaptive world is. Where you adapt to things, but I'm just saying it was, it really made life a little easier. And anytime we remove a barrier for somebody that skis uh, with disability, you're removing at least one barrier or something simple, especially for the parents or the crew. That's schlepping all their stuff with them, it's just one step down the process that reduces a little bit of stress.
Have you, have you had conversations with Ski Cooper about what, how you're going to be able to still provide the same service, but through a different?
We'll figure it out.
Not, you, yeah, you haven't gotten there yet, but.
Well.
Have you had conversations with?
On the horn, uh, all the ski resorts operate a little differently, this is for us, we'll adapt as we go.
Yeah.
But, we have a good system working.
Yeah.
And that's gonna go away. So, we, we'd love to see the idea left in there down the road as new buildings are built, technology advances. We have that advantage.
Thank you so much.
Well, I can appreciate, you know, removing barriers for disabled skiers and other special needs skiers for sure. The uh. Visualization for me was, you know, getting through those gates would, would add a barrier, but, you know, from what you're saying, the, the human element of it. The assistance from guest services was beneficial.
Think about everybody that's just learning to ski, how difficult it is for somebody without a disability to learn to ski. And all the gear parents bring with them, they'll triple that with somebody that's living with disabilities. And their day is, they're having day one of their ski day. We remove a lot of barriers with that process. And that makes simple, and this is a living document for decades, for ten years or twenty years. So if we take something out and technology catches up, we're waiting to the next one. To put any help that we can benefit from that technology. Someone that just says, hey, if you just leave it in there, technology catches up. Or some new idea comes along that we could modify or adapt to it, then we can do that, we can be more successful. But we never wanna limit ourselves, cause when you limit, you take away success, and we don't wanna take away success.
Well, to be really clear, this does not lock us in for ten years, we can send in um, amendments to the MDP. We can even send in a whole new MDP before our tenure.
Yep.
So I fully, I fully agree that like, we should be able to keep up with technology and continue to break down barriers. For our differently aged folks.
So, so look at Winter Park's.
Yeah.
MVP, they, they have stuff that, uh, robotic stuff in there that probably, we're probably thirty years through. But they have it in there now, in case it does catch up. And I just want, anything that creates a barrier, we should. Leave something in there that we can overcome that barrier, without always having to go through. The governmental process, sometimes we can solve problems without the governmental process. We can solve it a little quicker if we just have a dialogue, so that's just. I'm speaking from, uh, from thirty years of experience.
That's great that everything you just said could actually be. Someone could say, you're making an argument to remove the barrier.
Yeah.
So we have to keep in mind that this is public property, this is our property. And putting up an unsightly orange and white barrier so. People can't ski to their cars anymore, they can't use the, the backside, that might be a good access point for you and your. Team, the backside by that ski patrol door. That used to be a really nice place to walk up, wasn't quite as steep, you don't have to go up through that loose snow, so. So everything you just said. With a few different words could actually be used to argue against your argument, so. I just think we have to keep in mind, this is, if this was a private property, put a fence around the whole thing, but it's not. And uh, this is public property and we're operating, you know.
We never advocate taking anything away, we are public land advocates, uh, we're Republican, should be open to everyone.
I understand.
We just happen to have built some, Ski Cooper just happened to have built something that really benefited us.
It is a barrier, we can call it a barrier or a fence or a gate, so.
I, I trust that Ski Cooper will be able to figure out a way to take the wonderful things that were part of the port of entry to help our adaptive skiers. I totally fully trust that will happen.
We'll figure something out.
Yeah.
Well, we removed something that was beneficial.
Totally, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, state your name, yeah, thanks, Mike.
Kedro Schaefer. Um, I don't know if the old ticket office was accessible to physically challenged people. And when the port of entry was built, they also built a ticket office with just stairs, so that. There was no ramp there or something available for physically challenged people, so. In a way, the port of entry. Did make a barrier. If you will. Also. You know, the federal government right now is getting rid of DEI. And uh. No matter where you stand on that position, that's an acronym that the media has put together with just three letters. The fourth one's always left off, it's an A, it's for accessibility. DEIA. I sense that. Across the board with the federal government, that there is less accessibility. So from the US Forest Service position. They might not be so interested in providing DEIA, if you will. And that's, that's the second point I wanted to bring up.
I'd also like to say that most skiers now have automatic gates, you don't have to pull your pass out. It's in your sleeve, it's on the left-hand side.
RFID.
You ski up, if your pass is good, the gates are open, so. You know, I know it's gonna cost more to check tickets, but eventually. Almost every skier I know has gone to that.
We're in a weird place right now technology-wise, um, you know, there is a. Low tech and high tech sort of coming together. And we're all trying to figure it out. Back in two thousand and three, I backpacked through Europe, found my way to Chamonix, Zermatt, and you know. They had the RFID system that Copper has now, back then, that was over twenty years ago. There were never any lines. And from what I saw, physically challenged people were going out and around through a special system. That was large for them and easy, and there, and there were no attendants, there were no lift attendants, the RFID system actually worked. I, you know, when I go to Copper, I see people. Getting stopped up every now and then, I think that's because people are trying to trade out passes maybe, letting their pass to a friend or something, so they wanna. There is someone checking faces and if they're all covered up, maybe they wanna check that person, I think that's what that's about. If you have your wallet near your pass, that can throw things off, or your phone near your pass. It can make so it doesn't work. But um. And you know, comparing Cooper to Steamboat, whoa. Been up there lately, I mean, that place is top notch and uh, they have the money for technology. And new systems, it's not just a bunch of two-by-fours nailed together. So um. Just a few things to consider there, I don't think the port of entry uh. Was a good idea, I don't think it's inviting for the uphillers. And um. Yeah, I think that's all I have, thanks.
Thanks for coming. I think there's, oh, go ahead, Jane, sorry.
I didn't mean to interrupt you, Jane Harrelson, one seven two Rafferty, I'm on the Cooper Board of Directors. And I'd like to thank the three of you for reading the MDP. It was long, it's dry, it's detailed, thank you. And I would also like to thank you for acknowledging that it's a pretty good plan. It was done in-house, so it didn't cost the taxpayers money, which is another plus. And I appreciate you getting it into the Forest Service on time, thanks.
Thanks, Jane. I think there's plenty of arguments for and against that section sixty, page sixty-six, port of entry. The. What I'm seeing from my point of view is that it's skewed just enough to make problems, then. Keep it in there, that's, that's all I have to say about it.
I'd say during my tenure, if we, if there's like a good enough reason. To bring the port of entry back that helps solve some of the issues that have been brought up. About the port of entry, like, I'm willing to take the time uh, to submit an amendment. That would bring the port of entry back, and for now, that, that case hasn't been made, and I really appreciate you, Jane. All the gratitude you bring into this room, and Dan, I really appreciate you. Being clear about why it's so important to you and why it's so important to operations, I fully understand what you were trying to accomplish, I think it was. The intention was beautiful and it was elegant, and unfortunately, it just didn't have the effect that we were hoping that it would have. And, and if we can make some of those adjustments and changes and make it more welcoming, then let's. I'd be willing to come back and make an amendment or submit a new MDP. And I just wanna say that I'm, I'm open to it, it's just that for now, we're not there.
Yeah, go ahead. Could I just speak for uh, another group of people, I'm Scott Adams, I'm also on the Board of Directors, sixteen oh five Mount Albert Drive. When we went to the thirty-dollar Thursdays, I acted as an ambassador at the front gate and helped people up with their skis. Those that we're talking about, um, we put eighteen hundred people a day onto the mountain on Thursdays. And I, I heard two complaints of people who didn't like the system as I talked to people coming in. Everybody else that I heard was really positive, and the group that was really positive and you could see the look of. Just relief on their faces was young moms who are carrying two or three kids through with all their gear. And you say, you know what, here's the passes, I'll help you get through, once you're through, put them in your pocket, you won't need them again, and the moms will just look at you and say. Seriously? I say seriously, you're done with those, put them away, the kids won't lose them, they won't be a problem the rest of the day. And I just think it's, just. Thank you for looking at the plan, thank you for reading it, I appreciate it, um, I, I think. Your inputs are, are positive, but I think it's important to listen to the larger community. That comes up and has comments and things that they wanna say about it as they come into the ski area this year, cause it's gonna be different. And I think we need to listen, that's all I'm saying.
Thanks, Scott. Hey, Jerry.
Hey, Andrew.
Alright, thanks.
I'm Jerry Andrew, uh, on board also. I think you need to look at the big picture, and I understand you guys are probably getting phone calls and community members who. Don't like the port of entry, I didn't care for it at first when I first used it. But you have to consider also that between ninety and a hundred thousand people are going through that thing that are skeeze. And it's a guest service, it's to make things easier for the people who go out there and ski. So they don't have to stand in long lift lines, so they can get all of their things taken care of. If they have an issue with their pass, they can get it dealt with right there, instead of standing in a lift line for. Fifteen, twenty, thirty minutes and then realizing there's something wrong with their pass and they gotta turn around and go back and deal with it. Also consider, I understand that national forests are public land. Try getting into. Try getting into Rocky Mountain National Park without going through their port of entry. Parks are also public land, and most of the big national parks have a port of entry that you have to go through to access the parks. So look at the big picture, don't just listen to a few community members who may be disgruntled. I think technology's gonna change, I think that port of entry is gonna get better as we go through it. And personally, I think it needs to be left in and let the Forest Service decide. Cause like Dan said, everything in that MDP has got to be approved by the Forest Service, and if it isn't, if they don't approve the ski school building, the ski school building doesn't get built. If they don't approve the new lift, the new lift doesn't go in. For some of that stuff, we'll probably have to have uh, either an environmental impact statement or an environmental assessment, which means they'll have to do scoping, and in that case, if the port of entry fits into that, there will be a scoping session, and whoever's against it or for it can attend that meeting and voice their opinion at that time, and the Forest Service will make a decision, so. My preference would be to leave it in since it's already in there and let the Forest Service decide.
Thanks Jerry, we might not always agree on everything, but I always appreciate your points of view on things and the different ideas you come up with, so thanks, I appreciate that. Go ahead Dan.
Uh, to speak about, so that, again, Dan Torso, one forty-five, one forty-two, Bayview Drive. Regarding the north side of the lodge, you know, about the access there, you know, as the operator, it is our responsibility to maintain safety. And the reason, you know, that will, that will continue to be closed, just so you know. The reason for that is, that is our loading and unloading area, we have deliveries, we have trucks, we have ambulances, and on a regular basis, we have people skiing out through there if we don't have it closed off. So my opinion is, and my stance on that is, I don't care if the whole rest of the place is open up. That area, we must maintain, you know, the best safety factor we can, and having it closed to people skiing out through there or walking up through is pretty important, you know, like, like I said, I give up a lot of things, but that one, I just don't think we can, because we have some very close calls. And um, so, yeah, just my thoughts on that.
Yeah, that's fair.
Anything else from anyone in the room? Any further discussion from staff or commissioners?
Not for me, thanks. Can I, can I make a comment? This doesn't really relate directly to the port of entry, but, but something else. Um, something you three may not be aware of, that happened thirteen years ago. In twenty twelve, Damon Lang, who at that time was a district forester from the Colorado State Forest Service, was district forester for Lake County and Chagney County, at the request of the county, wrote a grant to do tree removal along County Road four and County Road seventeen. So basically, he went with the, and, and uh, the grant got approved. We had a meeting out at the search and rescue cache, Brad Palmer from Roden Bridge was there, uh, Dan Daly from the fire department was there, Mike McCarr, the emergency manager at the time, was there. Mike Bordonia, who was county commissioner, was there. I was there representing CMC and Damon Lang was there. Plan was for CMC, cause I was in charge of the forestry program, they were gonna use our chipper, some of our students. Some of the other work was gonna be done by the swift crew at the Glam Vista Correctional Facility. Everybody who was at that meeting was on board, from a fire standpoint, from a snow removal standpoint, getting all that stuff taken care of on those two county roads. There was a public meeting at CMC, probably thirty or forty people in attendance. One homeowner was vehemently opposed to cutting those trees. He was the second homeowner from Bolden, did not wanna see those trees cut, because he was of the opinion it was gonna lower his property values. He went back to whatever subdivision he was living in, convinced a bunch of his neighbors that it was gonna lower their property values. They all got together, came in, talked to Mike McCarr and complained, talked to the county commissioners and complained. And the county commissioners acquiesced, and they turned down a forty thousand dollar grant to get those trees cut. One person, they listened to one person who was misinformed, they didn't consider the safety of all the people who live on the west side of the county who drive that, to those two roads every winter, and would have to use those roads for evacuation in the event of a wildfire on the west side of the county. And so, I urge you to be careful listening to a handful of disgruntled people and look at the greater good. Those trees still have yet to be cut, with the exception of a small portion that was done, um, I think last summer or two summers ago, by volunteer group. It's hard for the county to get the snow off those roads in the winter. Uh, there are places where there are some blind corners where you can't see traffic coming, and it's been thirteen years and the problem has gotten worse. There's more trees there, the trees that were there thirteen years ago are bigger. There no longer is a forestry program at CMC, and the swift crew has moved down to Canyon City. And it's probably gonna cost more like eighty thousand dollars to get that work done. So be careful listening to a few people and look at the bigger picture, cause that work could have easily been done in twenty twelve for probably less than a forty thousand dollar grant.
I can appreciate the analogy. One thing I think um, needs to be pretty clear is that none of us at this table just talk to a few people. Between the three of us, the networks we have, the people we listen to, the people we hear from, is a lot bigger than I think you guys are ever gonna give us credit for. If that's how it's gotta be, that's how it's gotta be, but I talk to, and I know a lot more people in this town than any of you guys are gonna believe. So it's not a small group of naysayers, it's not a few disgruntled people. It's a pretty significant amount of people that I get my input from and I base that on. I don't base anything off what I personally want. There's things I'd love to do, yeah, pave my road, please, can't do that. So, you know, I'm getting my information from a pretty big group of people and a lot of voices, so. I'm just gonna hopefully clear that up with you guys, you know, I don't live in a bubble. I'm out here on the streets every day, and I listen to a lot of people, so.
Jerry, I appreciate that, that point you made, absolutely. I think that especially, you know, we've only been here for seven months. But um, we definitely have to deal with the choices that were made by people before us every day that have gotten us into situations that we wish we weren't in, absolutely. And, and I, I, I think that one of the maybe main differences between the example that you brought up and the way I, I perceive myself to be acting in this role right now, is that I'm not listening to second homeowners. I am trying to listen to the people we're supposed to be representing, and the people who um, are quite frankly afraid to say anything because we're a small town, and so I think that, I, 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 I agree, we don't wanna, we're going to make mistakes though. Mistakes are gonna happen, and I am keeping myself open to this port of entry to be able to come back. And it's just not gonna happen now, cause this is the only lever we get to have in this moment, is to be able to say, you know, no port of entry now, but let's amend it in the future, okay? So, so I, I really love your example, and the more examples you can bring up as we go for, for our entire jobs, not just us working with Ski Cooper, I wanna hear those opportunities where you can say like, hey, this might be a mistake and this is why. I would love to hear more from you, not just around Ski Cooper, so thank you.
You know, just real quickly, the other thing that concerns me personally, I've been on the board eight years, and either the other commissioners weren't doing their job, I'm sure with you that they only showed up for a very small percentage of the meetings. This is the first, these, the things that have happened in the last five months, six months, this is the first I have ever heard of any of this stuff coming out. With the port of entry, all this stuff, none of that was ever shared with Cooper Board from your predecessors.
Yeah, we're trying to do things better.
Well, and that's good.
Yeah, thanks Jerry.
Good, Bruce.
I wanna clear the record on something that Jim brought up. Jim brought, makes a good point about, about listening to a few people. But I was on the Board of Commissioners when that uh, issue came up about cutting trees on those two county roads. And the only thing I wanna say is, it wasn't the commissioners who voted the, voted the uh, the grant down. It was Mike McCarr who pulled the plug.
Oh, okay, I did, I pulled that, yeah, okay. I didn't wanna see that there kind of power.
Well, I really like what Elsa said, and uh, I think, you know, if it was a port of entry way that you could configure it, that didn't literally build a wall around the place, like natural barriers that funnelled people to your folks that, take it, you want me to check your ticket, make sure it's good, check your pass, you know, so. I would, I like what Elsa said, that we're, you know, we're more than willing to be wrong, and we've been wrong before. And I'll be the first to admit that I've made some, some decisions that I regret, but uh, you know, I, I agree also with Elsa that it shouldn't be in this one. But I don't think there's anything stopping this from next year, if you guys came back with a really good plan, like, put some natural barriers here, so it's not an orange and white road barriers, it's, I'll just reiterate, it's unsightly, it's uninviting, you know, it, it is a barrier, and, and I've heard that from more than a handful of people, so. They stepped up um, RFID system maybe, cause for some reason you can go to every other ski area, and if you place your passes in the right pockets, you're gonna be fine. Um, that particular scanner at that port of entry, um, if you have to take every other pass out of your pocket, you know, there's a lot of people here who've got multiple, access to multiple mountains. So you can't get through there if you have any other passes in your pocket, it gives you the eh. And then I'm standing in line looking at parents putting all their kids' gear down, putting everything, trying to figure out which, their kids' passes they put in which pocket, and they gotta take that out. Usually the, the guest services guys are like, okay, just head over here, we'll get you sorted, you know, help them pick stuff up. It's not a intentional thing, but I've seen it firsthand and heard it from other people plenty, about for some reason, you have to take all the other passes out of your pocket with that particular scanner. But at other ski areas, you can, as long as you've got your pass you need front and center, it scans it pretty well and doesn't pick up your other passes. So that's something I've noticed and I've heard from other people, um, about having to put all your stuff down, figure out which pass it is, and then the guest service representative comes out of the building, tells you, oh wait, come on over here, just go, or they'll wave you on through, cause they know you, or something like that. But the uh, you know, it seems like for some reason that one just picks up any pass, no matter if it's in your sock or if it's wherever, you know? But, go ahead.
No, it's okay, sorry, I was just waiting.
Oh, go ahead Mike.
Actually, I don't want everybody to miss all the great things that are in the MDP. Um, this is enhanced bathrooms for people with accessibility issues, it has ramps, it has an enhanced ski school, enhanced lifts. I think we're stuck on the port of entry, because it's the easy one that, but just submitting the MDP makes this more accessible to everybody. We have one accessible, two accessible bathrooms at Ski Cooper, and one's really hard to get to. The other one is, it's old, it meets all the requirements, but it's old. So I, I look at the bathrooms, the railings, the ramps that will be built, the new building, it'll be much more accessible, better lifts. So I think there's a lot of cool and great things in the MDP that we keep overlooking, and that's the importance of getting it submitted, because this only enhances everything we get to do uh, for the next ten years. I'm getting old, I can't continue to do the adaptive stuff, and I wanna be able to have the people that are gonna take over for me completely set up for the future. I wanna leave it better than when we started, and I think this MDP does that for us. And I think we need to look, we're stuck in the tree right now, and we're not looking in the forks on how, how cool this MDP really is, uh, and the enhancements it's gonna bring to Ski Cooper, so, um, that's.
It opens the door for some awesome stuff, that's absolutely for sure. I don't think any of us would disagree with that statement, thanks Mike.
Mike, we're just, just process-wise, we're trying to be timely about the things that we want to edit, so that we can get the MDP in, and we only have an hour. That's why we're only focusing on the things that we wanna edit, and we've had other conversations that celebrate.
Yeah, this isn't my first MDP for accessibility setup.
Yeah, great.
Uh, but this is a cool one.
Yeah, great, that's great to hear. Um, I have a process question for Dan. Dan, the MDP we have currently says draft across it. Um, in order for us to submit to the Forest Service, I hear that you have, there's some connectivity issues over at your office. Is there any way we could get a, something that doesn't say draft, so that we can edit it to submit?
I can, I can get that done.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
That'd be awesome. As soon as we get that from you, then we can make our edits that we approved today and get it in. Thank you, great.
Um, I think I have an edit, the most recent one you sent me, that was the final draft version, I think is editable. I might be able to pull those out too.
Okay.
Um, in-house here, so if you're having glitches out there on site, um.
I'll let you know if that works.
Yeah, I think I've been able to highlight just the draft, but we're turning in a draft MDP, so is it?
You know, I just don't, I don't, the one that I have.
Yeah, has the gray.
Has draft across.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanna, I want them to understand that we're, this is our product that we're submitting for the, for the deadline. And if it says draft, they might be like, well, is this the real one?
Do you have a Word version?
I think the one I've had, I've been able to highlight the giant draft word behind the text. Um, so if I do not, then.
If not, Steph, you might have a converter, the only, I'd, I'd rather work for, from a Word version, because the converter tends to mess up the.
Right.
What I'm looking.
I can, I can, I have sources.
Okay.
I can get a hold of the Word, uh, version, and actually get the changes that you're talking about, you're done, and also get the Word version draft taken off there, if that's, you know, your pleasure, you're, you're, you guys are approving it, so then I guess at, at that stage, it's no longer a draft here, it's a draft to the Forest Service.
Yeah.
It's up to them to, to the acceptance process.
Right.
So yeah, I will, we will contact, I will contact you, Andy, if that's how you wanna do this, get that taken here.
Sure, sure. My only concern is the less back and forth we have, sooner we can send this thing to.
Yeah, no, no, I can get this done pretty quick.
Okay, cool, alright.
Okay, then I will move to approve the Ski Cooper MDP with changes to page sixty-six that removes the port of entry, and page, pages seventy to seventy-two that moves the ski school up a phase to phase one.
I'll second the motion.
And to a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. If there's one positive, I know we're not gonna agree on the port of entry right now, but at least we're talking and we're calm, we're not pointing, shaking fingers at each other, and that's really important to me, so. I think that's positive out of this one. What's that Dan?
I second that, okay.
I'd really like to move forward on a friendlier terms, so whatever it takes, I can buy you all a cup of coffee, that helps.
Or beer.
Or beer.
Thank you all for coming, it means a lot that you were here in the middle of the day.
Yeah. Alright, um, if there's nothing else from anyone, staff, both commissioners, anyone else in the room? It's ten twenty-one, we will conclude today's special meeting, Lake County Board of County Commissioners.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you guys, thank you Jerry.